I'd like to call the City and Marine City Commission meeting to order, Marine City Fire Hall. Regular meeting Thursday, May 17, 2018, 7:00 PM. Please stand for prayer from Reverend Dr. Ken Gad, please.
Can we take a moment and center ourselves in the presence of God? Holy One, known by many names and beyond all names, Spirit of life, Spirit of love, Spirit of community, and Spirit of justice, we ask your blessing on the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live and work and play. Help them as leaders to ask, "How do we fix this? What do we need to learn? How might we need to change? And to whom do we need to listen?" Remind us that we are not only leaders, but we are also servants, and that it is our responsibility and theirs to serve the common good of all. Remind them that no matter where we live, everyone is our neighbor, our sibling, and throughout the ages prophets have called the leaders of the people to respect and protect the least among us. Grant them and us the wisdom and courage to know what to know and to do what is right and good and true. May they and we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May they and we always be guided by the Spirit of community, by the Spirit of justice, and by the Spirit of love. And we pray, in the name of all that is holy and sacred, that all we hold good and true and right. May it be so. Amen.
And the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mary Ann Bosch.
Here.
Mr. Avery.
Present.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Clausen.
Here.
Commissioner Lovely.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
City Manager Love.
Here.
I need, and we're moving on to communications, I need a motion to receive and file departmental activity reports, Marine City area run report, the zoning board of appeals minutes, Davis Kirksey Associates, and Oasis Walnut Center.
I make a motion that we accept and file the communications as just read by our mayor.
Any questions or concerns on it?
Just a quick one in your report for miscellaneous, you have OPEB, what's that acronym for?
Other Post-Employment Benefits.
Any other questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Moving on to public comment. Anyone in attendance who's welcome to address the City Commission, please state your name and address, and please limit your comments to five minutes. Chief Hustle.
I'd like to make this quick. Thanks for having us. Jim Hustle, 375 South Parker. So, January, we had a full-time officer resign, move on to a department up north, opened up a hiring process, received overwhelming 13 applications, narrowed it down to our top four through the interview process. We chose Dan Backsendale, just recently retired out of Detroit after 20 years, spent a small stint with community relations with the Detroit, was on the verge of a promotion, but the way the Detroit system worked, if he was to be promoted to the sergeant role, he'd have to stay until 25, and he chose to forego that promotion and come here. So, just wanted to take this opportunity and introduce the new officer, full-time officer Dan Backsendale. Thank you.
May I feel like am I already at home?
That's not what you practice.
Anyone else like to address the board? Mr. Jenkins.
Keith Jenkins, 809 South Water. I'm losing my voice. I got the article here that was on the front page of The Voice after the grand opening of the hotel. I want them to comment on that. I'm not going to read it because of the time constraints, but anyway, I also wanted to point out that, and thank the Vertons for their thanking banner they put up on the front of the hotel. The list includes 74 separate contracting companies, 90% of which were locally hired to build the hotel. A small contracting business averages about seven employees, counting office help, et cetera. So, all told, over 500 local contractors and their families were supported during the 14-month build-out. And that's not counting the building supply employees. I'd like to single out a couple of statements from The Voice, too. Kathy Burton stated, quote, "We drive through this town, and we drove through this town, and we said, 'This is a cool place. That's why we're here.'" The Vertons put the Marine City Tifa Board on their thanking banner to recognize the role Tifa played in making Marine City a cool place in the first place. Also, there's a line in the article referring to a 14-month construction period sometimes marred by controversy. "In many minds, the only controversy over the inn on Water Street is why any elected official would vote no every time the administration had to decide whether to support the Vertons' efforts or not. I understand there's a political component that plays a role, but constantly voting no to maintain a certain constituency can jeopardize the future of the city as a whole." One of the county commissioners explained the thread at the inn's soft opening. Say St. Clair and Marine City were both vying for a brownfield grant. One of the parameters that carries a substantial amount of weight with the committee's final decision is community support. Community support is reflected through its elected officials. So, if all other grant requirements are met by both St. Clair and Marine City, the decision moves to which city administration voted unanimously to support which, and which had dissenting votes. So, it's easy to understand why it's important for elected officials to vote for what's best for the city as a whole instead of what's politically expedient. I'm very proud that Marine City has risen to the ability to attract investors like the Vertons. They are a gift to Marine City, and we owe them a debt of gratitude. The mayor was absolutely correct in characterizing the grand opening as momentous. Our town is literally making history. I'm hoping in future that all of Marine City elected officials can look back someday and recall these momentous historical accomplishments and proudly and truthfully say, "I was a part of the, I was part of that. I supported that when I served. That was my contribution, and that's my legacy." It's like the pastor just said during the prayer, "We should act in the spirit of community and not the politics of division." Thank you.
Are we going to have a speech about the commission later? Sir, vacancy.
If you'd like to speak, I'll.
Michael Frank, 218 Pleasant Street. So, you guys are going to be considering a new person for the commission tonight, and yeah, a couple of them definitely concern me a bit. First being Mr. Joseph Moran. Joe, Joe's a good guy. I like Joe. I really do. There's nothing personal against him, but I just think he's a little bit out of touch with a lot of the constituency that is here. You know, he has been at this podium and said some pretty insensitive things, considering what makes up this town and how many people we have here who don't make a lot of money, who live in poverty, literally. You know, this is a direct quote, "If you're not willing to spend that much money to keep your town going in the direction that it's going, then move to Elginak, move to St. Clair, move to Richmond, move to Cotroville. They have a much smaller tax basis. You'd be happy there." I mean, is this really somebody we want to appoint to this commission that says things like that? That people are too narrow-minded of a view and too damn cheap to pony up their share? I mean, these are just horrible things to say about people that are the most vulnerable people in our population. I mean, I think everybody wants this town to move forward, but some people just can't pay those extra dollars every year. You know, we have the third highest tax rate in the county, you know, and yeah, it amounts to a pizza every month, but this is a pizza that's coming out of some people's mouth. So, to say some of those things, it's just, we need people that are in touch with everybody that lives here, that understand all the struggles that they're going through. And Joe, I just don't think is that person. And Mr. Miecoff, he was already recalled once, and he even messaged me saying it was the hardest job that he's ever done, and he'd never think about doing it again. And then, not even a week later, he's up here looking for a seat on the commission. So, I'm a little confused exactly what happened there, but I need somebody that's going to be committed and ready for the job, and from what he said to me, it just didn't seem like he was ready to go down that road again. And yeah, I'd just like to endorse George Bukowski. He's, you know, proven in the past that he's for responsible spending, he's able to take his emotions out of the decisions and realize what's best in the bigger picture, more specifically with City Hall. So, yeah, I just hope that this board really considers, you know, all the factors, not just what it looks like on a resume or on paper, how much experience they have, but what the person is, what they represent, what their past is like, and make the right decision. Thanks.
Charles Signory, 224 North Elizabeth. Couple of things I'd like to talk about tonight. I don't even know where to start, really. Six weeks ago, this board had voted against the Tifa that is currently running in this town. I'm still kind of complexed on all this with what's going on. I believe that this board is a good board. I think you guys need to work together. I think that the Tifa Board is a good board. I think the planning commission's doing a great job. Your infrastructure committee's doing a great job. Joe stood up here last week and gave a great report. My concern is this, we're closing a, again, I'll say it, a tool that this city has. Now, has it been a perfect tool in use? Maybe not. I think we're always looking at the past. We need to move forward. We need to be proactive, not reactive, and I see this town doing this a lot. My concern is, six weeks after you dissolve a Tifa, put in place to dissolve a Tifa, you have talked to an infrastructure board member that's with the committee on that, and one of, three of the options are loan, bond, and millage, which I agree with. We're going to have to do something. Something has to be done. We all agree on that. The roads are terrible, the infrastructure's failing, and we're spending a lot of money, and we have to do it in a timely fashion. The question I have is, you have revenue that is tied to the Tifa Board that we are giving up. I want to say, I did some math and talked to a few people, looks to be about somewhere around the 50,000 mark on the county. That 50,000 could pay for a nice long loan bond per year to get this done in a timely fashion. So, that's something I'm really just scratching my head over after six weeks later. The next thing that I would like to talk about is City Hall. We're also looking at possibly leasing space, renovating somebody else's building. I'm not really for it. I don't think it's the time yet. I'm agreeing that you guys need to have a better work environment for your employees, but is it the time right now? Our roads are a mess, a lot of things going on. It's just another burden I think you guys have. What I would suggest that you do, it's 2018, for the ADA compliance, I would ask that Mike Itrich go to the store and buy some paint and put two parking spots, just like Kroger has, Joam Fabrics, Myers, or anyone else. It's called curbside service. And you know what? When a handicap person comes up there, they park, there's a number, you call that number, it goes right into that office building, and say, "Ma'am, I need an absentee ballot, please. I'm in parking spot one, handicap." "Yes, ma'am," and you go and you serve them. That's what we're here for. We're to serve the people of the city. Doesn't cost a lot of money, guys. Ms. Squires is here, I don't know, at least six months out of the year. She's at the meetings, I bet, so 12 of them, saying that we're not ADA compliant. She needs help getting into the building. She needs this or that. These are things that you need to look at. I'd really appreciate it, because that's what's thinking out of the box, and that's what we need to do. We need to think out of the box. Capture the revenue that you have. Tifa isn't dead. You guys can come back to it. You all have a right to do that and make a motion. And I ask that you guys would really seriously think about the tools you've got to keep them, get this city going, keep it going. St. Clair's looking awful nice. I'd hate to see businesses go up there. We need to keep things going. It's a small city, it's tough, I know. You only got so many hands that you can take the money from, but you know, your taxes, there's only 4,000 people here, just over. So, it's small, it's difficult. I'll get on taxes when that time comes. I think you're all doing good. I ask that you all get together and think out of the box, think different, okay? Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Hearing none, we're going to move on to approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Any questions or corrections on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Moving on to the approval of the minutes of the City Commission Budget Workshop, April 24th, the City Commission Regular, do we need to do one per? Okay, City Commission Budget Workshop, April 24th. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes? Mr. Avery.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the City Commission Budget Workshop on April 24th of this year.
Any questions or concerns on these minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Moving on to the approval of the minutes for the City Commission Regular Meeting, May Mr. Avery.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes, the City of Marine City Commission Meeting of May 3rd, 2018.
Support.
Motion's support. Any corrections or deletions on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Moving on to the City Commission Closed Session Minutes, May 3rd, 2018. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the City Commission Closed Session Minutes of May 3rd, 2018.
Any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Moving on to the Consent Agenda, I need a motion to, just to discuss the business license for Barrel Bar and a special vet permit for the Memorial Day Parade. Mr. Avery.
I hadn't thought about this, but the Barrel Bar Bike, it is certainly different than what we are used to in the city. I don't know how you handle the liquor license on it, but that's beside the point. Is this the image we want to pursue for the city? I'm just not sure. I just wanted to ask and hope that other people will have some comments here on this. It is new, and it was surprising to see.
Yes, Mr. Tucker.
I would make the motion that we approve the business license for the Barrel Bike Bar. If you want to see one in action, go to Greecity Town. They're all loaded the place. And anyhow, if there's support for that, I have a couple of questions, too.
Support. Proceeding with just approving or not approving the consent agenda, would the commission like to remove this issue from the consent agenda?
I'd like to postpone it so that we could get more information on it.
We have a lot of information. Maybe you want to pull it out of consent agenda and have a discussion on that.
There's no one here from them for, to help just...
No, because it was on the consent agenda.
We've done a lot of research, and we might have some answers to some of your questions.
Mr. Avery.
I make a motion that, well, we have a motion. Don't we have? Yes.
I'd just like to say, my one question about it was, in other municipalities, they have insisted that the Barrel Bike Bar be attached to one of the local businesses, and I don't know if that's part of information or if that's been discussed.
It's not attached, but it does have a place that it's going to be kept. They're going to be running space with a lazy llama to keep it there, and we have a lot of questions.
So, they are attached, they are going to be attached to a local business. That was my question.
We've been kind of putting through the wringer since probably January, getting everything addressed, and we felt maybe we should have typed something up so you'd have that, but if you have any questions, we could probably answer.
And it's one of those things that some people are going to love and other people are not going to like, you know, so forth and so on, but I do think that it's something that will be a part of the destination kind of thinking of the city.
The, as far as location, I'm assuming Water Street would be their main route? Doesn't say anything.
Well, the circle, Water Street to Bridge, they said we're open to suggestions, and I spoke with the DPW, the fire chief, and the police chief, and they said that would be acceptable to do that route to Bridge Street, to Main Street, back to Broadway, to Water Street. The pickup spot would be in the corner of Market in Broadway.
Was it Main Street or was it Market?
And you burn calories while you're consuming them?
No, to Main Street, to back to.
A lot of work for a drink. Yes, please.
How do they deal with the liquor licenses?
They don't need one. They bring their own liquor. It's, I have all the paperwork, consulted with the city attorney, the state made a ruling on that where they didn't need it, because they supply their own.
Okay, so I went on to their website to look to see what they had, and they said they only do beer and wine. Is that true?
That's true.
Okay, no bottles?
If anybody with liquor, they won't allow on there.
Okay, and no bottles, no one under 18. They have a pilot. No one under 18.
I was in an 18-year-old state, that was Wisconsin. I think it's 21 for late 19.
It is, but I'm just looking at their one from Mount Clemens.
To be a gas and beer, probably.
Yeah. Yes.
Because they're unofficially a bar. They said that if they exit, they have to dispose of any opened containers. They can't, you know, they advise them that they can't carry them around.
How are you going to deal with them parking? I mean, we got a parking problem now. How are you going to deal with the parking when they want to stop it? Because I know one of the things, too, is they can also stop at all the local establishments, so how do you deal with that? Or you just stop, let them off, and then keep going?
You could probably give it a point in time, you'd be back.
Yeah, I did see that Harpsus Island's done it.
And I talked to the, I emailed the township supervisor, Artie Bryson, about it, and he said it's been a complete success, and I asked him for pros and cons, you know, to bring back to the board, and he said, "We have had no problems at all." But, you know, it's a quieter community than what we've got here.
Yeah, it only goes through San Souci.
And he mentioned he'd been to other bigger cities like Ann Arbor and things like that where they had it, and talked to officials there, and they said it was really well-received.
Mr. Clausen. We're going to open that up. We have a festival that's gone here for years, and we do not allow them to be on the street with beer and wine. And is that open in Pandora's Box? Because where's the liability come in if they're bringing their own booze and going up and down the street? I'm against it.
I don't like it.
On the street, they'd have to be on a vehicle. She had mentioned if, when they say, make a stop at the restaurant or something like that, they either have to finish what they have at that, sitting, you know, sitting at the unit, or dump it out before they go into the bar.
Would they enforce it?
It would be up to the police. It'd be similar to open intoxication, but recognizing the fact that this, in essence, is like a strolling bar, and once you leave, you can't have the open container with you.
And the person driving is not, they provide the person driving.
Correct. And then there is, there is like storage on the inside down below for them to put future drinks, yeah.
The owners said they strictly enforce everything, because they don't want it to be any reflection upon them either. They can be welcomed into the community, it cannot be a problem. I'm just reciting what the questions that we've asked.
Yeah, we had a lot of concerns as well when we saw this application. One of the concerns that I had was, where are they going to go to the bathroom? And they made it very clear that they work with local restaurants, that they have stops that they go to these restaurants and, you know, utilize their facilities, and I don't know if they drink, eat, things like that. They said typically, the way that they run it is that they do, I think it's like a two-hour run, and most people usually go to dinner afterwards. So, that's the way that they typically run it. One thing to keep in mind is, this is a business license. If things aren't going well, there are problems, you can always revoke the license.
I was going to say, we had some experts here at the last meeting, did an extensive parking study for us, and they're, they told us that we do not have a parking problem. We have a communication problem, that people don't know where the parking is, and so forth and so on. So, we are, you know, dealing with that. The other thing is, this is working really well in some other communities, and like you said, if it doesn't work well for us, then we can deal with that down the road. I think it's worth a shot. I think it's a fun thing. And the other thing is, and I checked on this, you can ride and not drink. You don't have to drink. And also, you're pedaling, so you're burning calories, and I think that's going to be a fun thing, you know.
And they have a big list of rules, so, and they adhere to them, so it's...
Anyone else have any questions or concerns on it? Now, you just made a motion just for this one so far.
For the business license for the Barrel Bike Bar, yes.
And we, did we get a second? Yes. Yeah, we did get a second, so. There's any other questions, we're going to have a roll call vote? There's any other questions, we're going to have a roll call vote? Well, we separated.
We separated it.
No more questions. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Avery?
No.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
No.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh?
Yes. All right, can I also get a motion to approve the special event for the Memorial Day Parade? Mr. Avery.
Please to make a motion to approve Memorial Day Parade.
Honor our veterans, the deceased veterans.
Any questions or concerns on the parade?
We're just, it's Monday, May 28, from 10:00 to noon, and it's, there's a, if you go into our package, there is a map, but it's the same map that they use every year.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
All right, we'll be moving to the public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the City, Marine City Commission will conduct a hearing to receive public comments on the proposed 2018-2019 budget. Public hearing has been declared open at... 31. Anyone like to address the commission on the budget? Yes, Mr. Avery.
Gerald Signeri, 224 North Elizabeth. I had the pleasure of being at the one night of your budget meetings along with two other citizens, and I just wanted to say that it is a tight budget. You did a good job, but I'd like to see it line item by line item. We didn't do that this year. This is my third year being here, sitting in the audience. And I guess the reason why I'm commenting on this, because I think it's real important that the people know that we need more input from the citizens of this town. Last year and the year before, I think it was just Bill and myself that were here. This year, we had Joe Moran and Mike Hilfrank, myself here, along with a few of the city employees. I, like I said, I know it's a tight budget. You guys did well. Mary Ellen always does well. Thank you. But I'd like to see more input from the people, more involvement from the people in how we spend the funds. And again, I got to get my plug in here. We're going to lose about $56,000 that could have helped you guys. That's all I can say on it. I'm not going to rub this any other way. It's just, I hope that everybody up here thinks long and hard about it. Thank you so much for your help, everyone.
Anyone else like to speak during the public hearing? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. 7:34. Moving on to unfinished business. Sidewalk replacement program bids. I need to get a motion to accept the bids.
Motion to accept the sidewalk bids, as presented.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions on the bid?
I think we're looking for a specific bid or the other.
Okay, good. I'm sorry.
Recommendation from the last meeting was for Conan at the amount of $24,615 for Conan Cement.
For Conan concrete for $24,615.
Support.
So, motion support. Any other questions on it? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Moving on to the road surface update. Mike, that one must...
Actually, I'll take it.
Okay.
You got any other questions? Mike can, I can spill in for me. So Mike and I both met with Ken, our consultant with Tetra Tech, and we were looking at the process for going out to bids for the three roads that we were talking about the last meeting. So we were talking about West Boulevard from M-29 to South Bell, and then South Bell to DeGers... Oh, sorry, yeah, DeGercy. And then the consideration of adding DeGercy, I'm sorry, North Bell River from DeGercy to City Limits. The estimated cost for that would add about 50% to the cost. So total estimates for the complete project would be anywhere between $150,000 to $200,000. Upon further investigation, a little bit more research, and talking to other communities and our consultants, we really kind of discovered that to be able to get the best project and to really meet the needs of what we're looking for, to make sure that everything's done right the first time, and we don't have any issues, we would request at this time that we work with Tetra Tech to put together bid specs and bid drawings. In essence, what they would be doing is doing the elevations for the road surface. So that's going to help us get a better idea of where there are areas where it may not be properly crowned, where there may be low points. It'll give us a better bid document to provide to the contractors so that we really know what kind of costs we're getting into. For instance, if we have areas where it's flat and we want to be able to crown it to keep the road or keep the water off the road, it's going to require more asphalt to bring in. So we spoke with Ken. He said his estimates to be able to put together those bid documents would run somewhere between about $3,000 to $5,000. So to be able to do this and put together the bid specs and have them for you would probably be the second meeting in June, we would be able to have bids, and you would be able to select it by segments. What we would do is bid it out for each of those segments separately, and they can also give us a total price as the whole package together. At this point, we're looking for a motion to work with Tetra Tech on a not to exceed $5,000 for preparing bid specs for the project for those three segments. And then we would have those probably completed within the next week or two, put it out to bids, and then we would be back before you with the recommendation, the second meeting in June.
Yes, please.
One thing, if, I know it's late this year, but if we're going to do anything next year, we should be doing this a lot sooner so that we can have this done sooner.
Yep. And that's something that if the bid prices come in unfavorable, we can bid it out again next year and see if we get a better price. I know timing isn't the best, but want to try and do something. And those specs will be good, even if we don't get good pricing, we could bid it out with those specs again.
Yes, please.
I thought the committee were just going to mill.
That's what it is. That's what it is.
Mill.
But it's a little more complicated than that, and then also, there's the issue with North Bell River, that we don't have any curbing on the one side. So dealing with the matter, that it's, in essence, pavement going right to the edge of the road and dirt and grass, and we've got the river there. We need to make sure that we're going to get the right permits and everything taken care of, so we'll need that in the bid specs, and Ken will be able to help and make sure that we have everything that we need in there.
I'd like to make a motion that we use Tetra Tech not to exceed $5,000 for the bid spec.
Support.
Motion support. Any other questions on it? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Moving on to, we're going to be filling the City Commission, hopefully filling the City Commission vacancy. Chris, could you read off the applications?
Do you just want me to read the names on who's applied? The first applicant is Joseph Moran. The second applicant is George Bukowski. The third applicant is Dan Micah, and the fourth applicant is Wendy Callahan.
I'd like to thank everybody for putting in the applications. It's good to have more than one to pick from, so it's nice to see that many. Hoping to see if we can get a motion to... A motion for...
I'll make a motion to choose Joe Moran to replace David Simpson.
Support.
Motion support. Roll call vote, please. Are any questions or concerns on that? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh?
No.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Commissioner Clausen?
No.
Did you say no? Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Could I get another motion to... Yes?
Like a motion that we nominate Wendy Callahan.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions on that?
It's a motion to appoint.
I'm sorry, motion to appoint. Thanks.
Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Van Bosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Commissioner Clausen?
No.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I was hoping that maybe we could hold off on the SEMCOG appointment for the alternative. We could hold off on the SEMCOG appointment until we seated Wendy, so...
Would you like me to bring it back to the next meeting?
Please. Moving on to new business. 2018-2019 fiscal year budget. Can I get a motion to, yes?
I move that we postpone this vote until the next meeting so that our, we can have a full board and that she has an opportunity to digest this, and I also have some more things that I'd like to digest.
I second that.
Motion to table.
No, postpone.
Postpone.
Until the next meeting.
Any questions on that?
Do you have any concerns with letting it speak up, please?
You want to speak then, or you want me to? Okay, I did, pardon me.
Okay, go ahead. Technically, when there's a motion, the only discussion is on the merits of the motion, not the merits of the substance. But I think your question relates...
Well, my question, I guess, is what would be the negative side?
Okay.
Negative impact of the motions.
Looking for information to help guide them on their motion, I guess?
On the motion, okay, I got it.
Okay, when I jumped into this with the city auditor, and he responded in a memo to myself, and I'll just read it to you. According to the Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act PA 2 of 1968 as amended, each municipality is required to pass a budget in conformity with the various requirements of the act. We also noted, the city charter indicates the budget for the next year will be passed in May. Therefore, it is our opinion as auditors, by not passing a budget before the start of the next year, the city will be in violation of the Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act and its charter. According to the Uniform Budget Manual for Local Units dated August 2001 on January 13, 1970, there was an opinion issued by the Attorney General that concludes if there is no budget, then there is no basis for levying or collecting taxes or otherwise making available or dispersing public monies, since the authority to expend funds of a local unit originates with the budget. We did note, there is a Q and A provided by the Michigan Municipal League's Handbook for Municipal Officers that addresses if a budget is not passed before the start of the year, a city charter may allow for council to approve expenditures sufficient to cover the minimum necessary expenses until the budget can be completed. There is no indicated authority for this position, and upon review of the charter, it does not appear the City of Marine City's charter addresses this issue, which again, I want to restate, it says that it has to be approved in May. The charter does. As auditors of the city, we are required by the State of Michigan and our professional standards to report noncompliance with the applicable laws and regulations. In our opinion, not passing a budget before the start of the fiscal year is a violation of the Michigan filed laws, and we would be required to report it to the State of Michigan in our auditing procedures report. In our experience, any findings communicated in our auditing procedures report will generate a notice from the state requesting the city to respond with its views in a corrective action plan. We also believe the State of Michigan would have the authority to cut or withhold state revenue sharing if they believe the city was in violation of Michigan filed laws. However, we're not aware if the state would actually withhold these funds. And see, the charter...
I think we get it. That's, we can't do that, so, there you go.
Yes, please.
I withdraw that.
Wait, before you withdraw, we could have a special meeting. You still have two more weeks.
You have to also look at the public hearing requirements, I guess.
No, I'm just saying, you still do have a couple of weeks before the end of May.
You'd be okay on the public hearing. You've already had your...
On the current budget. That's proposed current.
On the budget, that's before you.
Yes.
So if you modified it, you'd have to have a different public hearing.
Right.
Were you going to modify your...
If we can, I just, you know, I think that Wendy needs to have, I think we need to have a full board. We could end up with a 3-3 here very easily. I think we need to have a full board and give her some time to get up to speed. That's all, I mean, and if you think that's not, I mean, we could always amend the budget, too.
Correct.
That's something that could be done.
Your budget is flexible going forward.
Yeah. So we need to decide which act you want to take.
Any other questions or concerns on post...
Postpone to a special meeting, I guess, would be the correction, to make it lawful before the end of May.
There was a motion. Did we get a second?
Yes, we didn't get a second. Mr. Avery.
I believe I heard that we can postpone the meeting to later in the month if we don't make any changes to the budget that we have. So it doesn't seem to me to be any benefit of doing this, knowing that we can amend later. What we're doing is mimicking very poor behavior that our federal government does of waiting to the absolute last moment and then passing something because we have to pass it. So I think we've locked ourselves into that position here.
You don't have the continuing resolution option.
And we can't print money.
Any more comments on the motion at hand?
Oh, did you withdraw your motion or not?
No, I just amended it to say to postpone it to a special meeting before the end of May.
Who was the second on the motion?
Were you?
No, I think it was Jim.
I had been before we made the amendment. I had been before we made the amendment.
Mr. Avery, on the original amendment. Are you, are you accepting the amended motion?
Yes, because we'll vote on it, so...
Okay. So, the motion you're now voting on is the motion to postpone this issue until later in May without altering the budget in the interim.
Roll call vote.
One other question, so... What that implies is that we're gonna have a special meeting?
Yes.
And at some point in time before that meeting, Wendy would get this information to have a chance to digest. She would then get sworn in at the special meeting, and at that point, your thought is, we have a full board to vote on it?
To vote on the budget.
Okay.
The same budget presented tonight with the public hearing.
Correct. Okay, I just want to make sure I understood.
Everyone's good, we'll have a roll call vote, everyone's good?
The way I understand it, it doesn't make a difference if we do it tonight, or we may have, we'll just have to have another meeting, so why do we have to have another meeting?
Yeah.
Yes, we have a full board.
One is that we'd have a full board, two is that if there are questions that, because I know I have some more that popped out afterwards, so then that allows us to ask more questions and make sure. Maybe we can't change it currently as is, but we could also, if something pops up, we could work to amend it at the next regular meeting.
You can't amend it until after July 1st?
Well, whatever.
It's available.
When can you schedule a special meeting?
We'll have to decide that next.
That's a different...
Roll call vote please.
Mayor Van Bosh?
No.
Commissioner Avery?
I see this as a... Errand of futility, I vote no.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
No.
Commissioner Lovely?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
No.
Motion fails.
Next, can we, can we get a motion to approve the 2018, 2019 fiscal year budget? I'll make the motion to approve the 2018, 2019 fiscal year budget.
Support.
Motion support, any questions on this?
Just a comment, so, based on the previous vote, there's a chance that this next vote is gonna turn out the same way, motion to approve will fail.
3-3?
We will then have to come up with a backup plan, right? We have to do something before the end of May.
Yes.
Any other questions on?
So, now we're talking about the budget?
The motion you're voting on now is to approve the 2018, 2019 budget.
Okay, so we can discuss this budget?
Yeah, you have a motion and a second.
Yeah, you have a motion and a second.
Now it's open to discussion.
All right, I got a couple of issues with, I guess I have some concerns, I missed asking this at the original budget meeting, and then I sat down with the city manager to ask about raises. Now, now I see a sheet in here that says, and I was fully aware of the union issues, but again, there was only one raise in here, and it wasn't the union one. We need to be transparent, this happened last year also. Then I see this letter saying that it's only the Teamsters and there's no one else, but that's not what I was told at the time, and it's also not what's in the budget, because there is a person in here that's non-union that's getting raised. So, I don't like the fact that that gets hidden in there. We didn't know about it, the public didn't know about it, they should always know about it. If people are gonna get raised, that should be listed in here. I can show you budget after budget where it's always been presented and it's always been listed in each section where those raises are gonna go. So, that's one thing. I'm also concerned that we have only like one car, a couple of computers, and a couple of chairs, and yet we're just breaking even, yet last year, we had a surplus, and we bought an awful lot more stuff than that. So, I'm really concerned at this budget. I've never seen one with so little in it, and then yet, there's no surplus. So, those are some of the concerns I have with it, and that's why I'm, I got issues with it.
Okay, I'd like to address the raise that's in there. Now, you have to remember, and it says right on there, that the only time it will flag is if it's over 3 percent, and that particular department and that particular employment did have a raise higher than the 3 percent, okay?
I made that rule.
That was something that was, that's where it's red marked in there, and that was the number that Mr. Gaber gave me back when we first started doing these budgets.
Even when I pull out Mr. Gaber's old budgets, they're all listed in each department, even if they're 2 percent or less. How is anybody on this board supposed to know? That affects our budget, when you give out raises, and then I was told that it was, there was a raise for everybody, even though not everybody was gonna get it. But I know in one instance, I did some comparing on the wage and benefit charts over the last couple of years, one person got $5,000 in two years. So, that's a pretty good, and that's a part-time person, that's a pretty good chunk. So, those types of things, I can pull out, a lot of old budgets, and I've got them all, where the raises have always been listed, 2 percent or less.
And that's something that I did address in the memo, is that in the future, we will be making it more transparent.
And what I would, when Elaine said that to me, that wage and benefit estimate, I will address where you have estimated wages and benefits, right in there, I decided next year, I will put down if there are any raises in there and what the percentages are.
Well, the other problem, too, is when we get the new wage and benefits chart, this is the same wages and benefits from last year, nothing changed.
Yeah, well, actually, it did.
As far as wages did, now some of the benefits did, but not the wages, they're exactly the same, I went through the full sheets.
Okay, let me explain, and I did, too. Let me explain, when we did this, the wage and benefit, I went to Elaine and said, for the non-union employees, I said, you, we had, it was decided that they would not get a raise. So, if they don't get a raise, you're not gonna see a change. And if you were to compare my wage, mine personally, my estimate from last year, and compare it to this year, you're gonna see that actually my wage is down. So is the part-time Kathy Thomases. And they, you know, again, you have to understand, unless you're a salary employee, I can't, I can't tell you what everybody's wage is gonna be, because they're the only fixed wage. Hourly employees are adjusted from year to year. You know, it depends, like this past year, we had a bad winter. Then you're gonna have higher wages. These are just estimates, I can't give you an actual number, except for salary employees. Same with the part-time policemen. One year, they may have that patrol officer be working all kinds of hours, and the next year, differently.
I think, I think maybe for clarification's sake, you know, she's talking about, in essence, what our expense is going to be for the course of the year. I think what you're looking for is more so for these wages, this is the hourly and the salary, and this is what we're, what we're anticipating it in this budget, and this is what we're basing it on. And that's something that I outlined in my memo, in the future, we will be doing that.
I mean, you have union people that you know are making wages regarding overtime and that, but you know roughly what they're gonna make, you also know roughly what their overtime is in some of them, but none of those wages have changed in here, so that sure doesn't tell me a whole lot.
Yeah, yeah, and that's something, clarification, in the future, we will be changing.
Any other questions?
I forgot, what was the second thing he brought up, Lisa?
Why there was no surplus.
Oh, well, you gotta remember, too, in other years, we've either used surplus funds or we've used designated funds.
Fund balance.
Yeah, and fund balance.
I know, but with one fleet car and a couple of computers, and were that, you were still, what, over a little bit?
We're adding, adding a part-time DPW person, so that makes up some of the extra.
Didn't you have funds committed, sidewalk program?
We did last year as well, yeah.
We didn't use much last year.
We also still have the full payment on the back truck.
Which we explained...
And the backup.
Yes.
Yeah, which is...
Which is out of the water and sewer fund, so ultimately, that's why there was a deficit, a larger deficit there. And the other thing is, is that a lot of your, you know, costs are gonna go up, but if you were to look at the revenues, you know, as far as even tax revenue, it's not really going up. Revenue sharing, you know, isn't really going up either, so, I mean, you gotta look at the whole picture.
I've been looking at this picture for a long time, you might want to check, too, your general fund, there's a addition issue there, I did that one a couple of times, it's off a little bit.
What are you talking about?
The general fund page.
I know, which one?
The whole thing, add up the whole thing.
It's all done in Excel. And I added it up myself.
You're talking about this page here, is that what you're talking about?
The resolution?
Where's the page? This page?
Which fund?
It's not, I'm saying the total, you might want to double check.
I know, but which fund?
You're talking the 3,273,755 is inaccurate?
Yeah, it's not much, but there might be something there, you might want to just look at it.
It could be a rounding with Excel. I mean, it's done in Excel.
I'm just asking to double check it.
I added it up numerous times, and I never seen anything.
Any other questions on the budget for the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovely?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to the new fee schedule for this year, and again, a motion to approve.
Support.
Commissioner Clausen made a motion to approve the 2018, 2019 fee schedule, and supported by Commissioner Lovely. Any questions on it? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovely?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, moving on to the cancellation of the July 5, 2018 meeting.
I'll make a motion to cancel the July 5, 2018 meeting.
Support.
Motion support, any questions on this one?
Yeah, why would you want to cancel that meeting?
Any other questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Carried, moving on to disbursements, including payroll of $282,171.87. Mr. Avery?
I make a motion that we improve disbursement of payroll $282,171.87 for this month.
Motion in support, any questions or concerns on disbursements? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovely?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Moving on to the, I need a motion to receive and file preliminary financial statements. Yes, Mr. Avery?
I make a motion that we receive and file preliminary financial statements.
Support. Motion support, any questions on the financial statements? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried, moving on to the city manager's report.
Some of the meetings I attended since our last meeting is Water Forum Group, Blue Meets Green, Planning Commission, TIPA, I also attended, the police department had a kind of staff slash training meeting up there as well. Mary Street Project is almost done, they're pretty much gonna be working on just the site restoration over the next week or so, and they should be done by the end of next week, I would think. Dust on M29 was starting to get stirred up again, I did contact the county, they came out with their sweeper, so we're still gonna be staying on top of that, I understand that they do have some new equipment, I think a sprayer or something, so we'll be looking forward to that being up and running and see what kind of an impact that makes. We did get our formal letter from the state about the underfunded retiree healthcare, the OPEB, that we were talking about earlier, so that starts the clock for the 180 days for us to prepare the corrective action plan, that is required to come before commission for approval, before we submit it to the state, so our deadline on that is November 13th, so we'll probably be working on that over the summer. St. Clair County is looking to have their road meeting, they'd like to come here, the date is September 20th, so that would be a 6:00 PM meeting that they would have here, and then as soon as their business is done, we would just roll into our city commission meeting unless anybody has any objections to that, if you can, please let me know as soon as possible. Planning Commission, they had the consultant from Wade Trim reviewing with them the 60 pages or so of ordinances, they were able to get through those, it was nice to see a couple commissioners there that were able to kind of listen to the presentation from, from Adam with Wade Trim. One of the things that we determined to try and get some of these through in a more timely fashion is some of the edits that we got from that meeting, once we have the new edited documents, we will not only disperse those to Planning Commission for their consideration, but also City Commission at the same time, so you will have more time to take a look at those ordinances and be prepared for when they come your way. I think that's it.
Anyone have any questions for the city manager?
Just, so, they're gonna use water now for the sweeper, because I've seen them sweep before, and they blow it all over those houses?
No, no, this is, this is some different type of equipment, I don't know if maybe Mike's familiar with it, it's something where it's like a wash down for the truck before they leave.
Okay.
I don't know if you...
Sprays wheels as the truck drives through.
As the truck goes over the weight scale, they spray the wheels.
Okay.
And they still got the sweeper that, with no water on it.
Yeah, 'cause it just blows a ton of dust all over those poor houses, all along that one street there, it's just ridiculous, and they need to either wet it down or figure something else instead of...
Yeah, we've been, we've been kind of on top of them and working with them to try and get this issue resolved, because nobody likes it.
Well, doesn't one of the rail yards have one with water, and the other one doesn't? Right, yes, so, the one that's in there for years has one with water, and they go out and spray water and take it down, the other one just...
Yeah.
Yeah.
They need water.
Anything else for the city manager? Hearing none, moving on to the commissioner privilege, Mr. Avery, you want to start us off?
I will, I will relinquish my time, I have nothing of benefit to say tonight, thank you.
I'd just like to personally thank Maggie Mykoff, she's been working for years on that Titanic memorial, and it was, in spite of absolutely horrible weather, it was a very successful event, and I thank her for her years of work and having that be a part and I thank her for her years of work and having that be a part of our city. I'd also like to thank all the members of the East China City Concert Band. They had a very successful concert Monday night, and it is a real joy to watch. Most of these people were really good musicians in high school, and then they decided, you know what, I really want to keep playing. And so they formed community bands, and we are blessed with one of the best. And they did some amazing things, including, which is a very difficult piece, the Star Trek movie score, and it was amazing. There was many things that were so good, and the St. Clair Community Singers, and their part of it, too. And also, I'd like to thank Jesse White, as he organizes the Memorial Day Parade. Sadly, not sadly, I am going to be in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, with my granddaughter who's playing in a volleyball tournament. And so I'm going to be able to go back to my hometown, Monongahela, Pennsylvania, and that's the way we say it, those of us that are from that area, and go into the place where I used to go to Memorial Day services every year with my father and my uncles and aunts, and I'm looking forward to being there, but I will miss being here, too.
I'd just like to thank the residents that supported and came out in this cold weather last weekend for the Rotary Club annual flower sale. The first two days was like downhill, and Saturday built us back up, so, thank you.
Well, I guess the only thing I have, just one comment. I get it from a lot of people about, I know grass is growing like the dickens right now with the rain, but try to not blow it all into the street and the curb along with the leaves and all the other debris, because it is a violation of the ordinance, and it does clog up a lot of the drains and stuff, so just be a little bit more careful with that, if you could, thanks.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to the four people that put in applications for Dave Simpson's position. I think all four would have, any one of those four would have been a good candidate. Sometimes personal agendas get in the way of things, but again, thank you, and no disrespect to anybody that was not appointed. That's it.
I'd like to agree with Jim on that, it's nice to see four people applying for... And there's, will be some openings on other boards, too, so if you could please apply for those. I know I'm always asking for somebody to apply for something, but it's nice when we have more than one to pick from, so, thank you.
I have a deadline, it's not, not a full deadline for the other boards, and I would very good see that.
So, somebody would like to help, because it takes a group to run the city, so... And more different opinions are good instead of having the same one. And just to remind everybody about the Memorial Day Parade, it's not about us, it's about us respecting and honoring the ones that didn't get to make it home, and that the reason we're here and being able to do this process because of them. So, thank you very much, and adjournments in order.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie.